This meeting is called to order. The invocation is going to be by Mr. Abdul Sharif of the Islamic Center of Wilmington.
The merciful Redeemer, the mighty, the wise, the most high, the giver of life, and possessor of power over all things. We ask for your divine providence over this meeting of New Hanover County Board of Commissioners this day, 5/20/2024. Grant them insight, wisdom, and understanding in the decision-making process. Grant them clarity to the fullest of all on all issues. Guide them through the channels of finance and expenditures. Give them the quality of excellence in planning both short and long term that allow them to do the right thing, the right way, at the right time. Help to guide our county in continued wholesome and quality of life, growth, and development. Bless our county in areas of education, arts, tourism, manufacturing, transportation, shipping ports, commercial, and film industries, continued growth in infrastructure, and excellence in citizenship accomplishments. Grant logic where needed, and bless our commissioners to follow logic to its logical conclusion. And when this meeting comes to a close, grant those present with a safe return to their intended destination. Amen.
Can we face the flag?
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Barfield is unable to attend today's meeting, therefore the board members present need to excuse him from today's meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that was easy. Okay, now the presentation of service awards. Mr. Pujay.
There may be some user error. Linking wire concerns, I'm afraid I may have. This is right. Good morning. So it's always an honor to be with you, but I say this every month, it's a particular honor to be here, recognizing truly some of the best and the brightest that have ever done public sector work. We have summer retirees with us this morning. We've got a goodly number of employees that have reached significant milestones in the service. We've got some new folks that have joined the team since the board last met. But we're going to begin with retirees this morning. We have three that are leaving after incredible careers of public service, but incredible dedication to their work and their craft. And so I'd like to ask Gwen Stahl first to come forward. Gwen, if you don't mind. Would you stand next to me and allow me to have the honor of reading about your time in service? Gwen is retiring after 12 years with New Hanover County. Gwen Stahl is retiring after 12 years of service to New Hanover County Health and Human Services, where she diligently worked as a social worker in our adult services unit for social services. Gwen began her tenure with New Hanover County as a program manager before choosing to focus more directly on client interactions as an adult home specialist. This role allowed her to apply her vast experience, greatly enhancing the effectiveness of her work. Throughout her career, Gwen has developed an impressive array of specialized skills, consistently prioritizing the well-being of her team and the public she serves. Her professional journey includes 32 years of service across the state of North Carolina in three different counties, in addition to her service in the U.S. military. Gwen, thank you for both of those services. Known for her steadfast attitude and professionalism, Gwen has faced challenges with grace, even when unexpected events such as a mouse damaging her county vehicle arose. I'm not sure if we have insurance for that. She celebrated for her positivity and ability to maintain composure under pressure. That's what a social worker does. Gwen's reputation extends beyond the agency to the facilities she monitors, where she's known as an exceptionally kind and effective person and a professional person. Gwen's going to be deeply missed, not only in Health and Human Services, but across all of the New Hanover County organization. Gwen, you've served for 32 years, 12 years in New Hanover County. We're better for what you've done for our older adults. Thank you. Congratulations, Gwen Stahl. 12 years of service to New Hanover County, 32 years as a public servant. So commissioners, we have another fine outstanding person who's made the decision to retire. Again, we don't like it when that happens, but we never begrudge someone they've earned the opportunity. And so I'd like to invite Greg Tucker to come forward, so I could read about Greg's 29 years of service to New Hanover County. Greg, congratulations. Thank you for what you've done in a number of departments. Greg Tucker is retiring after 29 years of dedicated service with New Hanover County. Greg began his career at the county's former waste-to-energy facility, also known as Waste Tech, before transitioning to facilities management in 2011. He excels as a trade specialist, where he has consistently demonstrated dedication and professionalism throughout his tenure in two different departments of county government. Greg has earned a reputation as a reliable cornerstone of his team, always professional, courteous, and respectful in every interaction. He celebrated for his strong work ethic, often going above and beyond the call of duty to ensure that his tasks are completed with meticulous attention to detail and promptness. Greg has been frequently recognized for his contributions, receiving numerous accolades, including stellar awards for his professionalism and his stewardship. His colleagues regularly acknowledge his efforts with high fives, reflecting their appreciation for the work that he does with them and for them. His supervisor and teammates have expressed that working with Greg has been a great pleasure. His enthusiasm and his can-do attitude are going to be greatly missed. We can't replace it, but we absolutely honor it. Greg, congratulations on 29 years of outstanding service, nimble service, effective service to the citizens of New Hanover County. Congratulations, well-earned. Greg, congratulations, and again, thank you for everything that you've done. So commissioners, we have a final retirement today, 36 years of dedicated service to New Hanover County. I'd like to ask Jan Kavanagh to please come forward. Jan, do you mind allowing me to read about your illustrious career? Would you be honored of standing next to me? 36 years of service to New Hanover County. Jan Kavanagh, say it for the third time, is retiring after 36 years of dedicated service to New Hanover County, with her current role in the sheriff's office marking the culmination of an incredibly notable and distinguished career. Jan began her journey in the information technology department as a programmer, analyst, and the county's only PC programmer. She developed software applications tailored to the needs of all county departments. Her role evolved into that of a systems analyst with a focus on public safety, on courts, and elections. Her passion for public safety and specialized expertise in law enforcement systems prompted her transition to the sheriff's office in April 2011. Jan received the Ralph Ketner Employee Productivity Award. I think that came with a $1,000 prize too, didn't it? Yes. She received, it was known as the Ketner Employee Award. It comes from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. You would know it in that form now, commissioners, for her innovative design of New Hanover County's election return system, an award given to employees who significantly reduced operational costs. That was the point of the Ketner Award, to take cost out of county government. Additionally, she's earned a Crime and Intelligence Analyst certification from California State University, affirming her expertise and dedication in the field. Jan is known for her unwavering commitment and dependability. Her professionalism and integrity are exemplary, truly embodying the shared values of New Hanover County. Her contributions have been invaluable, establishing her as truly an irreplaceable person doing the business of New Hanover County. Jan, 26 years of service also across two different departments. We're safer, we're healthier, we're more secure because of the contributions you've made to our community. Please congratulate Jan Kavanagh for 26, 36 years. I was going to, I shorted her 10 years. 36 years of service to New Hanover. Jan, congratulations, 36 years of service to New Hanover County. we've recognized who have a combined 77 years of service to New Hanover County. I'm looking around, that's older than every person in this room. 77 years of combined service to the benefit of New Hanover County. I think the three of them deserve another round of applause. If you'd like. We're going to recognize service awards, and we're going to be in some pretty rare air as we move through this this morning, but we're going to start with the five-year service award. And when I call your name, if you would, please come forward. I'd like to be the first to shake your hand, thank you, and then invite you to visit with the board and also have your picture taken. So our first person this morning with a five-year service award, Nicole Lacari in the Senior Resource Center. Nicole, thank you for being a part of this team. Also with five years of service, Janine Veering in the tax office. Janine, congratulations and thank you for being on the team. Also with five years of service to New Hanover County, Tracy Ray, the Department of Social Services. Tracy, congratulations and thank you for being on the team. Commissioners, we're going to proceed to 10 years of service recognition. And our first person this morning, Marissa Sierra, Department of Social Services. Marissa, congratulations. Thank you for being on the team. Also with 10 years of service this morning, we're going to recognize Amarel Sargent, Facilities Management. Congratulations and thank you, Amarel, for being on the team. Commissioners, I'm excited to move to 20 years of service, and we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. Six great folks that we're going to recognize this morning. And the first one, Holly Royals, Department of Social Services. Holly was just promoted to Assistant Director. Congratulations. Commissioners, also with 20 years of outstanding service, Christine Buffard, Planning and Land Use. Christine, congratulations and thank you for still being on the team. Commissioners, also with 20 years of service this morning, we're going to recognize Stephanie Lamoche, Health and Human Services. Stephanie, congratulations and thank you for still being on the team. Also, 20 years of service, Amber Smith, Senior Resource Center. And Amber, as you know, is our director. Congratulations. Also with 20 years of service to New Hanover County, Tiffany Bickel, Department of Social Services. Tiffany, congratulations and thank you. 20 years of service to New Hanover County, Wendy Farr, the Health Department. Wendy, congratulations and thank you. Commissioners, we're going to proceed to 25 years of service, and we've got one outstanding person with us here this morning to recognize. After 25 years of service, Maisha James, the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Maisha, congratulate. So commissioners, I mentioned we would be in some rare air this morning, and it happens where we'll have someone who has 30 years or maybe 35 years of service that we recognize. But we've got three folks this morning that are here no less than 30 years and still going strong and hard every day. So we're going to recognize an employee with 30 years of service first, Nikki Todd, the Health Department. Nikki, congratulations. This is a team effort, no doubt about it. If you're here 30 years, it's a village supporting you. And I've had the chance to recognize Nikki at least two other times on five-year increments, and so I've had the chance to say, almost every morning I get an email from Nikki with an important message for the day. So I know I'm alive and well when that email shows up, so I always look forward to reading it. So 35 years of service is the next threshold. And again, these are not folks that are contemplating retirement, at least not that I'm aware of. But they're coming to work because they love the work that you allow them to do. And so we're going to recognize the first person this morning with 35 years of outstanding service to New Hanover County, Beth Topping in the Health Department. Beth, congratulations and thank you. I hope I said 35 years. If I said 30, I missed it by five. So we have another person to recognize this morning, 35 years of service to New Hanover County. I've heard him often say that he came to work before there were child labor laws. But 35 years of outstanding, continued service and commitment to New Hanover County, Mark Francolini, Chief of Human Resources. Robert, come on up. It's partnerships that make these things successful. So we've identified a bunch of incredible folks this morning, but the ones with the most seasoned tenure are three retirees, are three folks with 30, 35, and 35 years of service. If you've been doing that math, that's 177. In six people only, 177 years. I don't mean just of service, but of outstanding dedicated service to the citizens of New Hanover County. And I know for a fact there's nobody 177 years old in the room this morning. They all deserve another round of applause. Congratulations and thank you to each of them. So I've had the opportunity to introduce some new folks to the board, but equally important to the community. And so what I hope you saw in the last 15 minutes or so are milestones of service that you want to achieve. We asked you to come to work with us because you can have a career here. You're smart, you're talented, but you're also passionate about public service, and that's the differentiator. That's why people are here for 35 years and keep coming to do the work, because they love serving the public, they enjoy implementing the policies of our elected board. So for those of you that are new to the organization, thank you for joining, and we look forward to seeing all of you here in five years. And so I'm going to call your name, and if you would stand up, we'd like to recognize you properly, and that'll be a loud round of applause. So first this morning, Lindsey Brookshire, Department of Social Services. Lindsey, thank you for coming to work with us. Also in the Department of Social Services, Valerie Price. Valerie, congratulations and thank you. Sharon Wilkinson in the Health Department. Sharon, thank you for joining us. Carrie Boydman, Building Safety. Carrie, thank you for coming to work with us. And Jim Chisholm, Parks and Gardens. Jim, thank you for joining the team. Commissioners, that does, that was a lot. But again, the finest people doing the most important work that can be found. Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Week Proclamation.
Hi. Do you want me to read that? Let me read it. 41st Annual National Travel and Tourism Week Proclamation. Whereas travel and tourism benefit New Hanover County's workforce and support our local economy, and whereas this year's theme of National Travel and Tourism Week, "Travel is Essential," celebrates the U.S. travel community and travel essential's role in stimulating economic growth, cultivating vibrant communities, creating quality job opportunities, inspiring new businesses, and elevating the quality of life for Americans every day. And whereas the United States, travel, in the United States, travel generated an economic output of 2.8 trillion in 2023, serving as essential catalyst for a productive U.S. economy. Domestic leisure traveling reached 855 billion in 2023. Domestic leisure traveling reached 855 billion in 2023. Travel spending generated nearly 89 billion in the state and local taxes across the U.S. in 2023. Eight million workers are directly employed within the travel industry. And whereas in North Carolina in 2020, direct visitor spending across the state was 33.3 billion. One in 50, one in 50 state residents are directly employed by tourism. New Hanover County ranked seventh in visitor spending among the state's 100 counties. And whereas in New Hanover County, visitor spending infuses millions of new dollars in our local economy each year that help to fund beach renouishment, the convention center, lifeguard programs, and more. Room occupancy tax collections in 2023 exceeded 24 million, setting a new benchmark. In 2020, visitor spending was estimated at a total of 1 billion, which represents an increase of 13.9% over 2021. In 2022, the travel generated approximately 7.8 million in the state and local tax receipts, thereby contributing to our quality of place and providing 317.7 cents tax savings to each county resident. The local travel industry provided more than 6,676 jobs in 2022 and supported a payroll of 276.6 million. Travel is essential in the county's economic success. And whereas in recognition of the significant effect of travel industry has on the local economy and the profound impact it has on lives of the citizens of New Hanover County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that May 19th through the 25th, 2024, will be recognized as National Travel and Tourism Week in New Hanover County, adopted this 20th day of May, 2024 by Chair William E. Rivenbar.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And on behalf of the New Hanover County Tourism Development Authority, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support of tourism in New Hanover County. And we're very honored that Commissioner Pierce sits on our TDA Board of Directors and thank her especially for her service throughout the years. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and your passage of the proclamation to designate actually this week, first time we've gotten to actually come on the week off, but we're designating this week as our Travel and Tourism Week here in New Hanover County. And this conjunction is in, this is in conjunction with the 41st Annual National Travel and Tourism Week, which is a national observation. And as Commissioner Pierce stated, over nearly 6,700 people here in New Hanover County are employed through the tourism industry. And for the first time ever in 2022, we just like to say this as many times as we can, we topped $1 billion in expenditures here in New Hanover County. So that was quite a milestone and shows that travel is essential here in New Hanover County. So thank you again for your support throughout the year. We're here to serve you and we appreciate all of you all, what you all do, and look forward to working with you in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kim, if we could, thank you. I just want to take a second to thank you. How long have you been in your position?
Well, I've been with the Bureau since 1989.
I knew it was a long time.
And I left the county after six years. I was a six-year county employee.
So I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you're doing because you've been there and you've seen us grow and it's a result of you and your team here in New Hanover County. So I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. We appreciate you as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Kim, it's worth repeating again that that $1 billion milestone, Mark. I remember distinctly when years in the past, we were talking about a couple hundred million. Nothing wrong with a couple hundred million, but a billion dollars. And that was in 2022. I think the numbers as they roll in will continue to climb.
Right.
Been the face of tourism in New Hanover County for a long time and we thank you for everything. I think one other statistic needs a little bit of highlight is that $317. That's the amount that doesn't go on your tax bill per, you know, person who's paying taxes in New Hanover County. That's a huge motivator, a huge statistic that's there and we thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Maybe a photo now?
Sure.
Next is Consideration of Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation.
Mr. Chair, if I may. New Hanover County Board of Commissioners announces this as the National Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month and while promoting mental health is important all year, this special month of recognition raises awareness about mental illness, its prevalence in today's society, and its impacts on people of all ages and backgrounds. Whereas during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, people already living with a mental health condition saw their symptoms worsen and many other people experienced mental health symptoms for the first time. And whereas 50% of all lifetime mental illness begins by age 14 and 75% by age 24. And whereas one in five adults and one in six youth experience a mental health condition each year and less than half of them receive treatment. Whereas 1,469,000 adults in North Carolina have a mental health condition. And of the 452,000 adults in North Carolina who did not receive needed mental health care, 44.8% did not because of cost. And whereas New Hanover County's strategic plan sets forth a desired outcome that every resident has access to services that support their physical health and mental well-being. And whereas New Hanover County recognized the tremendous impact of mental health and substance use disorders in the community and developed a strategic plan focusing on increased education and ensuring access to services that support sustainable recovery and well-being. And whereas of July 16th, 2022, with the launch of the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, anyone can call, text, or chat 988 should they or someone they know experiences a mental health, substance use, or suicide crisis. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that May 2024 will be recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month in New Hanover County, adopted this 20th day of May, 2024, New Hanover County by William E. Rivenbar, Chair. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your support. Thank you for the consideration for Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental Health Awareness Month is part of a nationwide effort to raise awareness of mental health and its impact on the well-being of all of our citizens, including children, adults, families, and our communities. Americans are experiencing stress, trauma, anxiety, and heightened levels of depression. Citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools are encouraged to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people who are in need. Personally, thank you for your ongoing support for the school mental health program and for mental health in general in New Hanover County. When we discuss accessibility, school mental health is a great example of that and it allows for a positive impact in the community that otherwise would not be possible. So thank you.
Trey, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, sir. I am Trey Willis. I'm one of the supervisors for the school mental health program. Prior to that, I was one of the school mental health therapists for about 10 years.
With the Health and Human Services Department?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion we approve this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Y'all have the floor. This is the New Hanover County, it's the National Women's Health Month Proclamation. Y'all have anything you would like to say?
Sure. Good morning and thank you for acknowledging the proclamation for Women's Health Month. I'm Michelle McGrath, the Clinical Services Manager, Pansy McNeil, Clinical Services Supervisor, and Allison Vogt, the Women's Health Team Leader. And these ladies are responsible for ensuring that all people who come in our clinics receive excellent care. But this month, we celebrate women who have taken control of their health and those who are on a journey to improve their health. We encourage all women to be empowered to speak up about their health concerns and to create a plan to prioritize their own physical and mental health. In the public health clinics, we're fortunate to provide several women's health programs to our New Hanover County residents, including Breast and Cervical Cancer Control, Wise Woman, and our family planning clinics. On behalf of Human Services and the women we serve, we thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting these programs. And Allison is going to give a quick overview of the wellness activities that were hosted at the Human Services Building last week in honor of Women's Health Month.
So last week, we wanted to remind our employees at HHS to prioritize their physical and mental health and overall well-being. So Monday, we kicked off the events. We distributed food, food which included fruit and granola bars at staff entrances. Tuesday, we had a line dancing session. Wednesday, I led a discussion about hot health topics for women, which included diabetes, high blood pressure, all types of cancers, and the importance of early detection and treatment. Thursday, we did a Let's Move It group walk around campus. And Friday, we ended with a session with our licensed clinical, one of our licensed clinical therapists about mental well-being.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas National Women's Health Month is recognized, whereas National Women's Health Month is recognized every May and is celebrated by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office on Women's Health to encourage all women to make their health a priority. And whereas recognizing that health encompasses physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being is vital, acknowledging that women who make 80% of healthcare decisions in the United States significantly influences family health outcomes. And whereas after age 65, over half of North Carolina women are living with two or more chronic diseases and 65% of North Carolina women are overweight or obese, which negatively impacts their overall physical, mental, and financial well-being. Whereas New Hanover County's strategic plan sets forth the desired outcome for every resident to have access to services that support their physical and mental well-being with physical activity a focus on self-care and regular medical checkups as components in achieving these targets. And whereas Women's Health Month will focus on a broad range of women's health issues, including heart disease, diabetes, cancer, respiratory diseases, and mental health to empower women to take responsibility for their health, understand their health options, and identify available services, thereby increasing equal access to services and resources. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that May 2024 will be recognized as Women's Health Month. The Board of Commissioners encourages all to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and regular medical checkups, and to participate in preventive health practices and early detection efforts for all women in New Hanover County, adopted this 20th day of May, 2024 by William E. Rivenbar.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we pass this proclamation. But before we do, might you interpret that adult males are in the constant state of denial about their health care? With 80% of decisions being made by females? Is that right?
Suggested.
They must be talking about somebody else. Certainly not me.
Next month's Men's Health Month.
Sounds good to me.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll note before we move on to the next item that we didn't have Alex, who normally takes our photos, taking the photos. We had Josh instead. Josh, I'll be watching and looking, see whether or not you did a good job. We had a lot of photos today.
Okay, next is Consideration of Approval of the Award of Construction Contract and Adoption of Budget Amendment 24-079 for the North Chase Library Project.
And good morning, Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to serve this morning. My name is David King, Senior Facilities Project Coordinator with Facilities Management, working primarily with Library Director Ms. Dana Connors, Chief Facilities Officer Ms. Sarah Wormuth, and Project Manager Kevin Jason. Today, we're here to request consideration of approval of the Award of a Construction Contract and Adoption of Budget Amendment 24079 for the North Chase Library Project. And with your permission, I'll move forward with a brief summary of our activity. The New Hanover County Public Library plans to construct a new 19,941-square-foot branch at the 4,400 North Chase Parkway Northeast location, which will be our library system's fifth location. This new library branch will support the objective of providing library services focusing on a five-mile radius to all residents of New Hanover County. Little over diversified architecture designed this facility, which will include a teen multimedia social room, a gaming area, a children's storytime pavilion. And we have also taken into consideration optimizing the site to take advantage of the natural daylight and other modern methods. On April 3rd, 2024, we put out a request for bids and it was advertised. We received six pre-qualified general contractors on May 3rd and our lowest bidder was Montith Construction with a bid of $9,378,200, as we have attached documents as well. The construction cost is in line with our forecast estimates received throughout this design phase. The most recent and previously reported total project budget estimate of 13 million remains unchanged. This budget estimate includes a 1% construction cost or approximately $95,000 dedicated for public art per the Public Art for Capital Projects policy, as well as cost for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Budget Amendment 24079 increases the budget for the North Chase Library by $3,600,000 and the revised total budget of 13 million, which is being funded or proposes funded with installment loan proceeds. And I'd like to make sure I can answer any of the questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
David, I believe this is your first time in front of us and in the public.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Beautiful job. What a great, you know, project to be kind of coming in on.
Yes, sir.
Great time to be in the library business in New Hanover County, between here and certainly Project Grace as well.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned all the kind of the really cool things that'll be in there. I'm assuming there's plenty of room for books as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Hot dog. There we go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Move we approve the award of the construction contract?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir.
I was getting up to take a photo, but I think we're done with that right now.
Well, there's certainly a lot of people excited about that library. I hear a lot of talk about it in the community.
Okay. Next is First Reading of the New Hanover County Abandoned Vessel Ordinance.
Mouthfuls. Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. We are here this morning to propose implementation of an ordinance to regulate the removal of abandoned vessels from our waterways. Currently, the authority of removing abandoned vessels from the bodies of water in the unincorporated areas of the county has been with the North Carolina Wildlife Resource in the unincorporated areas of the county has been with the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission. Staff has drafted the attached ordinance, which allows the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office to take appropriate action to address abandoned vessels in the unincorporated areas of the county in accordance with General Statute, North Carolina General Statute one five-three A dash one thirty-two. The ordinance defines what constitutes an abandoned vessel, outlines procedures for notifying the owner and if necessary, removing the vessels. It allows owners to notify the county within ten days of the notice of the plan to address the issues specified in the notice, and thirty days to rectify the condition or remove the vessel. Additionally, the ordinance provides authority to the Sheriff's Office to remove or relocate the vessel with all associated costs of towing, relocation, removal, and storage, or disposal and area restoration falling to the owner. Penalties and violations of the ordinance are included, such as a class-three misdemeanor with a hundred dollar per day fine for each offense and a civil penalty of five hundred dollars per offense. The ordinance permits the Sheriff's Office to take these actions only within the unincorporated areas of the county. It will not prevent the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission from continuing to take necessary actions as well.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is an important change to the rules here in New Hanover County. We've had quite a few folks who have reached out to us to let us know about this issue, and we're attempting to be responsive to that. How do we get our waterways cleaned up? We haven't had as clear of a pathway forward to do that until now. So I want to thank you and all the folks who worked on this for putting it together, because it is another tool in the toolbox that's going to help us be responsive to citizen requests. How best for folks who identify something that's been abandoned to let us know? Of course, they can reach out to me, but there's probably a more expeditious way to get it done. Reach out to the Sheriff's Office?
Yes, they can reach out to the Sheriff's Office. They can contact the front desk, file a report, and we can take that report. It would be forwarded to the Marine Unit, and then they will begin their, technically, incident investigation. So they'll begin that ten-day investigation, go, and they'll put a sticker on the boat, and that's kind of when the clock will start, and then they'll try to do the research to identify the owner of that vessel.
And just for the purpose of making clear what the procedure is, this is our first reading of this proposed ordinance. Next month, we'll read it again and presumably pass it, and then you'll be able to act on this after that. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I might. I just want to thank everyone who worked on this ordinance. Coming from being a mayor of Carolina Beach, this is something we had trouble with for years, is abandoned vessels, and that is something that endangers other boaters. It endangers wildlife and the waterways, and it's something that is really important that we clean that up. I'm really glad that you guys took that initiative. I did reach out to the beach town mayors, and they're all excited and want to get on board, and let's all be on the same page. Actually, talked to a city council person as well, and there are also waterways within the city limits that we all need to be on the same page, because this is such a danger to our environment. So I really appreciate y'all working on that.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief Deputy Hart. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I want to add my voice to the chorus of yahoos that you're hearing right here. This is a problem that's plagued us, you know, forever, but certainly got heightened after Hurricane Florence. And we're, you know, finally got to the point where we can do something really specific about it and giving you the tools that you need to help solve or resolve this problem. Also, it's my understanding of this that this is something we can only pass in the unincorporated portions of New Hanover County. And as Commissioner Pierce just said, she's reached out to our, you know, the mayors and the different towns, beach towns. But I'd like to kind of, you know, add to that, and if we could have our county manager, Mr. Cray, reach out formally, maybe with a letter, to those beach towns to encourage them to sign on to this proclamation or to this ordinance, excuse me, so that we have everybody pulling on the same rope at the same time, so this no longer becomes a problem.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this ordinance for a second reading and final adoption at the June seventeen, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal results through three thirty-one twenty-four. Mr. Cradle.
Morning.
Morning.
As you noted, this is to provide an update on our financial position for the nine months into March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, which represents seventy-five percent of the way through the fiscal year. As an overall summary, actual results thus far through the year are largely in line with budget, with revenue one percent over budget and expenditures three percent under budget. As we will see in more detail in a moment, within revenue, property tax revenue is in line with budget. Sales taxes are coming in lower than budget, and interest revenue is tracking higher than budget. This slide provides additional detail of those total revenues and expenditures in comparison to budget, as well as trend analysis for the prior two years. As can be seen, total revenues at this point in the year are at three hundred and fifteen point one million, or two point three million dollars higher than budget, while expenditures are at two hundred and ninety-seven point seven million dollars compared to a budget of three hundred and eight point three million. This slide provides more detail on general fund revenue. Property tax realized through March thirty-first amounted to two hundred and ten point seven million, compared to a budget of two hundred and ten point two million, and the prior year amount of two hundred and three point eight million. The growth from the prior year is due to a higher tax base, which was partially offset by a half-cent rate cut in the current year. As it relates to sales taxes, with actual receipts of forty-seven point five million, we are approximately two million below both budget and prior year. More information on property and sales taxes will be provided in just a moment. The other revenue category shown on the right side of the chart shows actual receipts of fifty-six point nine million compared to a budget of fifty-three point one million and prior year of forty-nine point four million. The primary factors impacting this favorable variance relate to investment earnings, which are three point two million dollars higher than budget, a two point two million dollar ABC board excess profit distribution received late last year, and approximately five hundred thousand dollars of proceeds from the sale of two blue-clay business park lots. On the prior slide, property taxes represent the greatest portion of the county's general fund revenue. This slide shows a recent history of the county's tax rate, and as noted at the bottom here, based on the timing of when the bills and payments are due, by now, most all property tax payments have been received for the fiscal year. This slide rolls forward property tax receipts one more month through April, the most recent data available. The first two bars from the left show that we remain slightly ahead of budget. While comparing the two bars to the right indicates that we need three point seven dollars more in May and June to achieve budget. In reviewing receipts, actual receipts for May and June of the prior two years, we've received approximately four million dollars for each of those two-month periods, so it's reasonable to expect that we will achieve budget and possibly slightly exceed it. The county's second-largest revenue source is sales taxes. We receive those taxes at a three-month lag, and thus the results through March thirty-first include six months' worth of sales taxes. And as noted at the bottom here, typically, the county typically receives a supplemental sales tax payment from the state each March that's based on a complex formula. That amount received in two thousand twenty-four was significantly lower than the amount received in the prior year. This slide updates the sales tax data previously shown for the two months that we've received now since the March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. One of those two months was favorable to budget, and one of those two months was unfavorable to budget, and thus, as you can see, we remain approximately two million dollars under budget and one point two million dollars lower than prior year. Thus, it is likely that we will fall short of our sales tax budget for two thousand twenty-four. Fortunately, the variance in our other revenue that I discussed a moment ago should offset this shortfall in sales taxes. This slide depicts expenditures by major government function. The dark blue bar for each function represents actual expenditures, and the teal bar is budgeted expenditures. As noted in the upper-left-hand box, total expenditures through March thirty-first totaled two hundred and ninety-seven point seven million dollars compared to the budget of three hundred and eight point three million and prior year of two hundred and seventy-three point six million. Regarding the bar charts, on the far left is education, which reflects the actual expenditures being under budget by nine million dollars, which is due to the timing of capital expenditures by the school system. Public safety is the next set of bars and reflects being over budget by three million. This is primarily due to personnel expense associated with overtime related to staff shortages. General government is the next set of bars, and it is right on budget. Next is human services, which is running eight million dollars under budget, the largest component of which relates to the timing of expenditures, many of which are expected to be incurred in the final three months of the fiscal year. On the far right is the other category, and it reflects being over budget, which is due to the timing of capital expenditures that were more heavily weighted in the early months of this year compared to prior years. That concludes the review of the general fund for the first nine months of the year. Just a couple comments looking forward to June thirtieth. Like this year and the prior two years, we budgeted using some fund balance. In the prior two years, we were fortunate not to have to use any of that budgeted fund balance, because revenue came in significantly higher than budget and expenditures came in lower than budget. This year, while projecting forward is always inexact, I expect that revenue and expenditures will be closer to budget and that some usage of fund balance will be required, which will reduce our unassigned fund balance to lower than the twenty-five percent level that it's been at the prior two fiscal year ends, probably something likely in the eighteen percent range. That amount is still significantly above our policy minimum of eight percent, but would be on the edge of falling below our stated target of eighteen to twenty-one percent. Moving on to some of the other funds, this slide relates to the debt service fund. All expenditures in this fund relate to debt service payments, and by year-end, the actual expenditures should always equal the budget with any variances during the year just caused by timing of payments. Outside revenue for this fund is comprised primarily of a property tax allocation and a portion of sales taxes, and these amounts are budgeted to equal the debt service payments. The lower revenue compared to prior years is due primarily to a combination of lower budgeted debt service payments in the current year. It's sales taxes in prior years that came in higher than expected. But so long as revenue is in line with budget, which it is, this fund should perform in line with budget. The Environmental Management Fund, which includes the county's landfill, collects no tax receipts and is instead a self-sufficient fund that charges fees for the services it provides. The tipping fee remains unchanged in fiscal year twenty-four after being increased by four dollars per ton in the prior year. The increase in total revenue in fiscal year twenty-four that you can see in the left side of bars on this slide is primarily due to higher tonnage at the landfill, with three hundred and nine thousand tons processed this year compared to two hundred and eighty-seven thousand tons in the prior year. In discussions with our environmental department management director, this nearly eight percent increase in tonnage is largely due to several large one-time industrial projects. Expenditures of nineteen point two million compared to budget expenditures of twenty point three million, which is a variance of one point one million, with the variance being primarily related to a bulldozer that's on order and is expected to be received any day now. As it relates to fire services, virtually all of its revenues is derived from property and sales tax allocations. As you can see from the bars on the slide, both revenue and expenditures are tracking very close to budget, with revenue of sixteen point seven million compared to a budget of sixteen point four million and sixteen point one million dollars in expenditures which match the budget. In fiscal year twenty-three, the orange bar there on revenue, a non-recurring transfer of accumulated interest from a special revenue fund to pay for equipment is why the revenue for that year is higher than the other bars. This is the third year of the county providing stormwater services to the unincorporated county and the second year of full service charges being, I'm sorry, full service fees being charged. Stormwater fees are included in the property tax bill and thus follow the same pattern of receipts, with nearly all of them being received at this point. Revenue is tracking right in line with budget, with actual revenue of five million. On the expenditure side, you can see from the, on the side of bars on the right, expenditures are significantly below budget at three point one million compared to a budget of four point six million. The reason for this variance is because minimal funds have been spent thus far on an eight hundred and forty thousand dollar white road culvert repair project that the board authorized earlier this year, as well as two watershed studies related to acorn branch in Pumpkin Creek totaling four hundred thousand that have not yet begun. As it relates to the white road culvert, all needed materials have been procured, and excavation work is currently underway. We expect that project to be completed in August. And as it relates to the two watershed studies that I mentioned, contracts were recently executed, and these multi-year studies are expected to be completed in two thousand twenty-six. That concludes my presentation.
You may have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I think we settled this one. Appointment of a voting delegate at the National Association of Counties, NACO, two thousand twenty-four Annual Conference?
Mr. Chairman. It is my honor to nominate Commissioner Rob Zappel to represent us in capacity. Rob, would you be willing to do it, please, sir?
Absolutely. My privilege. Thank you so much.
And I would like to second that, and Rob, you do a wonderful job representing us and county commissioner, and I feel very confident putting you in that position.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I'll call you later and tell you what I got to say. Okay, next is...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to make a formal vote on that motion. Second?
Do we have to on the delegate? Okay. Is there a motion?
Here it is. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Next is appointment. New Hanover County Commission for Women, one vacancy.
Mr. Chair.
Nominate Harriet Blevins, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Neri Honor.
Okay, we have two, and we got room for one. So... Harriet Blevins?
That's who I made motion to nominate. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll go with that. Who we got?
And, uh, it's two votes. Mr. Chair, could we call for the vote for Neri Honor?
So who are we voting on? Which part?
Neri Honor?
I'm a little bit confused.
That didn't get a second.
Let's, let's, shouldn't we call the vote on Harriet Blevins, who was nominated first?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
I know we did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's three, three votes.
How many votes are there for Harriet?
There are three. I made the motion. Bill made a second. Leanne just voted in favor of that motion and second.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. And Harriet Blevins it is. Okay, that's the... Nursing, we have four vacancies and one applicant.
Chair, I move that we nominate Phyllis Miohl.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Last is... On the report, Portaway and Beach Commission, we have one vacancy and have one person as applicant.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Edward Jones.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's the end of that. So on the speaker sign-up sheet, we have one person, Phyllis Cabrera. Hi. Ms. Cabrera, you've got three minutes.
Okay. I'm really nervous, so forgive me.
Just look at me and don't worry.
Okay. So I'm really concerned about the school.
Talking to the microphone.
Oh, okay. I'm concerned about the school situation. I know there's a huge gap in what the school board is asking for and what the commission is going to give. And I guess what I'm concerned about is like it appears that over time there's been a big shift in funding from public education to charter and private schools, and those are not viable options for some students. And so it seems like it's sort of segregating low-income and special-needs students from students who charter schools and private schools well-work for. And I just, I think that more investment in public education is really important. And also, I'm confused about the... And, uh, also, I'm confused about the funding here for education. I mean, I just moved here a couple of years ago, but there's a big education lottery, and I don't know why there should, where that money goes. It seems to be really hard to figure out where that goes. I can't find it anywhere. Um, so that, I just wanted to express my concern as a voter and a, and a resident of the county. Thank you.
Yes, something that's pretty interesting is the, is the lottery money. When I was on the school board, I asked one day, I said, how much money do we get from the lottery? I mean, a lot of people don't know, twenty-five cents on every dollar that is spent goes to the schools. I said, what's the rest of it go to? They said advertising and prize money. That's a shame, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, uh, the woman who just spoke here, could we get her to introduce herself and tell your name and address for the record? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, come on, yeah.
My name is Phyllis Cabrera, and my address is fifty-seven fifty-seven High Grove Place, two eight four zero nine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to get out of order, but I do want to make one comment before we close the meeting today. After you've polled everyone else if they want to speak, I'd like an opportunity to speak.
I'd like to make, is this related to what she just said?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, if I could go first?
Please.
I, I just want to make a comment, um, and I appreciate you speaking, and we feel the same way. Just, just so you know, we feel the same way. We want to give them all we can, but the problem is we have a budget that we have to balance as well. So that's, that's kind of the position we're put in just a few months before our deadline, and we have exactly a lot of the same questions that you brought up, you know? How, how is that funding spent? And it, it's falling now on us as a county to find those tax dollars for our schools, which is, for me, and I'm sure the other commissioners up here, our most important thing are our children in New Hanover County. So just a comment I wanted to make.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I also like to follow up with a comment the speaker made. Uh, the state legislature put a cap on the amount of money from the lottery that can go into the schools, and when it gets above that cap, they take the extra money that people believe are going to the education lottery, and it goes elsewhere within the state budget. That's part of the problem there is raising that cap or amazingly eliminating. I, I just don't think anybody anticipated just how successful the lottery would be. But it's an age-old problem of a lot of money and politicians.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the weekend, had a very happy occurrence in the Scalise family. My brother and my sister-in-law gave birth to their first child, Margot Ann Scalise. She is absolutely perfect, perfect in every single way, and I wanted to tell Margot right here, right now, that I wish you every happiness and health over the course of your life. You lucked out in the parent department, and you should always know that Uncle Dane will have your back. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Uncle Dane.
Yeah. This meeting is adjourned.